All right, I'd like to bring to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for May the 15th, 2018. So let's take a moment of silence, please. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got two big items to do tonight. The first thing, at six o'clock, we're going to start in with the public hearing on the BVU-Sunset item. So I don't really have any specific comments on that, just to say that the transaction from BVU to sell the OptiNet division to Sunset Communications is proceeding. There's been a lot of traction in the last, I would say, three to four weeks that we haven't seen in a while, so it looks like with the new financing management firm behind Sunset, it's moving a lot quicker toward closing. So now they are in the mode of having to wrap up several legal contractual items in order to go to closing and make the deal transactionally closed. So what we're going to do tonight is one item that has to be done as part of that transactional closing process. So the BVU attorney is intimate with what we're doing tonight. He's reviewed all the contracts, made the recommendation to our city attorney on how the language needs to read for this, to make sure this is one of the last boxes that needs to be checked, so that we don't have any other voting items that we need to do, so that they can close the transaction. So that's all I really got to say. Randy, do you have anything as far as city manager comments?
No, in regards to this transaction with Sunset and BVU, a part of the city ordinance, there is a franchise agreement that allows BVU OptiNet to serve citizens of the city of Bristol with cable service. So this franchise agreement needs to be transferred over to Sunset Digital to allow them to operate. However, this will not go into effect until the closing of that acquisition occurs, even though we will have a second reading on this on May 22nd. So the language of the ordinance prevents this from transferring up until the closing of the transaction with Sunset and BVU.
All right, so with that said, unless there's other council comments...
I just want to thank BVU, the board. I'm so thankful that our legislature decided to change the board and give it fair and equitable representation from Washington County, Scott County, and the city of Bristol. And that includes you, Mr. Mayor, who serves on that board. BVU is fortunate, and I'm actually trying to kill a little bit of time because we're going to get this done pretty soon. We have to come back at 6:30. I was offered, I offered the mayor to let me sing, but he said, "No, I'd run everybody off, and he wants you all to stick around." So, but, but the long and short of it is, BVU is being led right now by a giant. Our CEO of BVU is a giant intellectually, morally, from a business perspective. Not that we're not being led that way either, Mr. City Manager, don't want to infer anything different, okay, please. But citizens of Bristol, Virginia, Washington County, all the investors that have a stake in this, kudos to our board that we have at BVU, and many kudos to our leadership. And thank them, each one of them, including you, Mr. Mayor, for everything you did to make, push this forward. And God willing, a curse on BVU to my personal experience has been lifted and will be lifted. And very thankful for that, and that's my... Well, I've still got 25 minutes, Mr. ...
So let me, so let me say a couple things. We need a little humor in our work here at the city. So when I decided to do the write-in vote and I got elected, right, the last thing from my mind was I was going to be on the BVU board. So when we had the first meeting and somebody said, "Well, the new law doesn't allow him to be on it,"
Thank God.
"And doesn't allow him to be on it, and he's going to be the mayor, so guess what? Tag your it." And I went, I was like, "Really? You've got to be kidding me, right?" Just like that. And so I said, "Oh, my goodness." So I guess my objective is to go up there and do the best I can just to stay out of jail. That was my first thought, right? I just want to stay out of jail. Because my wife definitely doesn't want to come see me in jail. She hardly wants to see me at home, so...
That's why we wrote that law, Mr. Mayor, so I wouldn't be on there, Mr. Hubbard wouldn't be on there. We wanted out there as fast as we could, but...
But honestly, sitting on the board now, it's actually been a blessing. Don Bowman is doing a great job.
Absolutely.
So the community really does owe a lot to Don. He's a hometown kid. He went to John Battle, engineer-trained, PE, professional engineering certification, really smart guy, honest as a day is long. So he is really, he's really turned the organization around. I mean, the employee base, the morale, the financials, everything is moving in a very positive direction at BVU. So we just got a couple of things we've got to do to take the next step, and hopefully the transaction of the OptiNet will be the first one to get that monkey off of BVU's back, because that's another example of, you know, you shouldn't let a public entity getting into the private domain, right? So thinking you're going to get into telecommunications business and be successful against these private companies is not going to be very well, again, in your favor. So anyway, with that said, I'll open the public hearing. We will consider a public hearing regarding the first reading of an ordinance to transfer the franchise agreement from BVU to Sunset Fiber LLC. So I hereby open that public hearing. Next item, staff comment.
Counsel, as I previously stated, this is an ordinance to transfer the franchise agreement that's currently in place with BVU OptiNet and transfer that over to Sunset Digital Communications once the acquisition of BVU OptiNet occurs by Sunset.
Okay, do you want to read this email that was up here?
Well, that will come in the number, item two.
All right, is anyone signed up for a public comment? Okay. All right, so I hereby close the public hearing. Now, item two, consider the first reading of an ordinance to transfer the franchise agreement from BVU to Sunset Fiber LLC. So I need a counsel motion and a second for the first reading of the ordinance to transfer that franchise agreement.
Mr. Mayor, okay, well, we have to read, we have to read specifically. Is that correct, Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I move that to adopt the ordinance, therefore be it ordained that section two, closed parentheses, little b, stating the term of the franchise agreement granted in the city of Bristol, Virginia, shall be renewed for a term of 10 years from June 26, 2018 to June 26, 2028. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Me and Mr. City Manager?
And is this replacing the section two b? Or is there a section two b? Is this an add?
This is an add to the current ordinance, ordinance as presented.
Okay. With that being said...
Right.
Add it on. You got it?
Motion to add it.
Motion to add to it.
Okay, so we got a motion to add the way the legal language here reads from Penn Stewart. We got a second by Mr. Hubbard. Council comments?
I've got a couple of questions, and actually this answers my first question, because in looking at this, it seemed that the agreement had expired, and I was curious about that, what the term was, but...
There's a separate agreement that is, if I can pull up the first agreement, right, but there's a second agreement after that initial agreement that would have put it expiring in 2018.
That's fine. I just, when I, when I read through the information, it just, I didn't see that it automatically renewed either, so... I guess my other question is, in looking at, I just want to make sure, in looking at section 5.2, it says that the franchising authority has the right to approve or disapprove rates that may be charged by BVU board, if such rates may be proposed. Does that mean that Sunset, if they decide to change their rates, will have to come and ask council approval?
If they're abiding by the franchise agreement, I think that's the way it would have to be done.
So I would say this council should expect that, because the way the cable business is going, they're raising rates continuously every opportunity, so you should expect to see that quite often. If you don't see it, it should be a red flag.
I think they'll make plenty of money moving their territory, expanding their territory. That's just my guess.
Yeah, they've got plenty of room to expand.
That's right. They really do.
All right, any other council comment?
And I'll answer Mr. Hartley's. Under the footnote of the franchise agreement, it was, it was ordinance number 03 dot 05 as adopted by the council on May 23rd, 2003, which superseded the franchise agreement that was on June the 11th of 2002.
Okay. Like I say, when I was reading there, I didn't see the footnote, I just...
Okay, any other comment? Okay, so we have a motion, Mr. Fleener, and a second, Mr. Hubbard, to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, so please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Monpower?
Yes.
What do you like?
Harvard.
Harvard.
Harvard, you're thinking of Ben Navy.
It's okay, he's new on council. Been a long meeting.
Already, already.
All right, please read the first reading.
Ordinance to transfer a franchise agreement from Bristol, Virginia Utilities Board, now BVU Authority, to Sunset Digital Communications, DBA Sunset Fiber LLC upon the closing of the transaction, whereas the city of Bristol granted a franchise agreement to Bristol, Virginia Utilities Board, now BVU Authority, on July 2002, and BVU Utilities Board entered into an asset purchase agreement with Sunset Digital Communications, doing business at Sunset Fiber LLC on February 5th, 2016, as amended. Therefore be it ordained that the franchise agreement granted in the city of Bristol, Virginia, code section 7.6 and section 11, be transferred to Sunset Digital Communications, DBA Sunset Fiber LLC upon the closing of the transaction, and the language that was previously stated in the motion will be added before the second reading.
So now we can adjourn, right?
You've got to... Yeah, we can adjourn.
The public hearing is hereby council meeting adjourned for February, or May 15th, 2018. I'd like to open the Bristol, Virginia City Council, May 15th, 2018 budget workshop, since we've already had the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance for the previous council meeting, we won't repeat that. So with that said, I'll first ask the city manager if he's got any comments, and then I'll follow up.
Counsel, based on comments and that we've had over the past several days and from Saturday, I believe the only thing that was left truly to discuss is the outside agencies, mandated outside agencies, and I will leave that up to council to start that discussion, and we'll move from there.
Okay.
Non-mandated, I'm sorry.
All right, well, let me, let me just kind of lay the framework then. We, we've got a budget session and time here that's kind of rough on all of us. It's not, it's not a pleasant thing to ever go through a budget when you've got a situation where you've got to watch every dollar that we budget and how we spend it. So there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth. So at the end of the day, there's got to be some compromise. Not everybody's going to get what everybody asked for, not everybody's going to get what they might think they need. I will say, the city is in a much better financial position today than they were 12 and 24 months ago. That's a good thing. But in the same breath, I'm going to tell you, I personally am always nervous, because it just takes a little bit right now to put us back in a position to where we don't want to go. So we're kind of walking a tightrope. We've got to be very responsible and very diligent about how we budget our funds and where we put them. So we've had a lot of discussion. I'll highlight a few things that happened over the couple of weeks leading up to this that I think are good news items, and I'll repeat them. Sheriff's Department has worked with the city manager, and they've put together a team, and they're looking at how we can reduce the inmate housing costs. That is one of the large items that we've got to deal with. It's working, so come with attorneys involved, sheriff's department's involved, city staff's involved, so they're, they now have a plan. They now have a way and a path forward to eliminate and reduce the, I'm going to call it, hundreds of thousands of dollars of excess costs, we'll just say it that way, that we've been occurring just about every year for inmate housing. So it looks like if they continue that work, we'll be able to reduce what could have been a million dollars down to maybe three or four or $500,000 here this coming year. That's a big step in the right direction. But we're going to have to take some of that money they asked for, and we're going to have to set it aside, because they might need some upgrades to some of the building facilities that they're going to try to use and things they're going to try to do there. So we're making a decision to slide that money aside and have it there when we get to that point in time. We have found some other areas of opportunity. Overtime, we talked about, we're not going to completely fund all the overtime that every department asks for. We're going to take a good portion of that and slide it aside into the city manager's contingency fund, and the message there is the city manager has responsibility to manage this city going forward, so if overtime's needed, obviously, the request will come to the city manager, and he'll decide whether that's warranted and make sure it's absolutely overtime we have to do. So that, that money could be somewhere in the 100 to 125,000 range. We don't know how much of that will be saved, because it'll depend on what's approved. So we're expecting some savings there. We decided to take the city attorney fees that were set in there at about 150,000 down by 75,000. That's going to stay, so that's a savings that we, we've all agreed to. So now we've got to talk about outside agencies. I'll go ahead and mention one good thing that we're considering now, which we haven't talked about. The city employees have not gotten a raise in this city for a very long time. And honestly, we're sitting up here watching every dollar, and is it, is it right not to give them anything? And I think most of us would say that's not right. We need the city staff to do what they've been doing over the last 15 months to 18 months, and I'll tell you, they, they've turned the corner. I mean, they, I could, I could see it in their eyes probably about nine months ago, all right? So that's a good thing, that's a good thing. But what it means is, they better stay focused, because the council is recognizing this city staff is really putting in the extra effort, right? So my message is, we're going to do something for the employees, and we're going to put a 1% bonus in this budget to make sure they understand we appreciate them. We appreciate them. It's not right to cut any other department until we do that first, right? Now, other people have to understand, it's coming out of some other departments, right? But the city staff did not create this problem, and we're not going to punish them for it continuously. So we're going to put a 1% bonus on the table for this council to consider. I think we figured out a way to pay for that based on the savings we've already talked about, right? And so that's a good news item, in my opinion, but the message with that is, your work's not over, right? We got, we just started to climb the hill, really. We just started, right? So any of those boulders could come rolling off at any time, and I'm telling everybody I talk to, that's what you've got to understand. We've got to keep walking very carefully as we go forward, right? And if we do that, and we stay focused, and we keep our eye on the ball, and we watch everything we're doing, we're going to get there. It might not be the way you want to get there, but we're going to get there, right? So the next two to four years is pretty critical for this city's future. We have refinanced the money to give us time. Now, we've got to make sure the other things in play here work to our favor, so economic development has to be given a full court press, and we have to watch every dollar we spend. It has to absolutely bring a return to this city, right? It cannot just be money we throw out the window for anything, anything, travel, nothing, right? Let's make sure we're very smart about what we do. So with that said, I'm going to propose to this council that we consider that 1% bonus, that we leave that attorney fee down by 75,000, and the other monies that we've talked about, and I think this is where the compromise comes, we've got council members on both sides of the spectrum on the outside agencies. We had $100,000 in the outside agencies. We're going to take that down to about 70 total, and then we're going to split that between two agencies. The recommendation is this, we give 50 to the CVB, and we give 20 to Believe in Bristol. Now, again, with that said, I'll tell you, the city manager has monies in the contingency, and I'm trying to tell that to everybody, including the school system, so don't think the money's not there. But you've got to come and justify the monies, and I think if we need it and it makes sense, we're going to figure out how to do it. But in order to balance the budget, we're going to pull that from 100 down to 70. 50 goes to CVB, 20 goes to the Believe in Bristol. And so that's my proposal on the table, and the, the school system stays with the 300,000 out of the budget, but again, that's, that's slid aside, so if, if push comes to shove and we've got to have monies, you know, we know where to go get them once the time is there. So hopefully, you're going to work with us, because we're going to work with everybody. We're going to get there, believe me, we're going to get there. All right. So that's where, that's where my proposal is on the table. I'm going to open it up for council comments and see where, where everybody wants to take this with the workshop.
Need a motion and second, first.
Well, well, really, we need to...
We have discussion.
For discussion?
This is just a workshop.
Workshop, yeah.
We can just talk about it, and then we can have a, a motion to adjourn, or we could have...
I'll say that I'm against that, cutting the chamber to 50 and giving 20 to Believe in Bristol. It's not that, I don't like either one of the agencies, it's this, the chamber's obviously got a track record of return for investment. Believe in Bristol doesn't have half the businesses in town even coming to the meetings or even paying dues. So the businesses don't even support Believe in Bristol. I think they do a good job for what they do, but they're not bringing in the kind of money we're going to be talking about, we need as far as tourism.
First of all, oh, yeah, yeah, we really have, we've boomed it with the tourism thing. And what I've looked at is a track record of one year, and the lodging fees in the city of Bristol, Virginia have not gone down, despite the fact they're 9% and one of the highest in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Sorry. Facts are facts, indisputable facts. People don't. They look on Google when they're driving down the road, and they look where they're going to stay. That's convenient, because they're tired, et cetera, et cetera. That's what's going on, that's what's been going on for the last 10 years, probably, so wake up and smell the roses. Now, I'll say this, our city employees, our city employees, ones back here tonight watching this council meeting, protect us for too long, way too long. They've been the ones neglected, they've been the ones neglected. School people, they've had, they've been taken care of to a certain extent, but, to a certain extent, but the people that clean our streets, do our fire department, take care of us, and so forth.
That's not objection.
Can I finish, Mr. Hubbard, please? And then you can, you can give me your two cents.
Let him talk, then you can talk.
Go ahead.
Okay. And, you know, we need to start being mindful of the people that work for us, instead of looking down at those people. So we can find the money from outside agencies and other things that don't protect us, don't defend us, don't put our fires out, and don't clean our streets. I have a lot of respect for those people. And when it comes time, up and down on first reading, that's where I'm going. I'll tell you now, and you don't like that, I'm sure Mr. Hartley won't like that, but, you know, that's three to two, I think.
That's democracy.
That's democracy, and, you know, just like we had democracy when we got the falls, and a disaster like that, when we had democracy, we had to waste the dump, which is drilling our city, okay? And I didn't see CVB one time bailing us out and paying, getting enough tourism in here to pay for that crap. And that's what it is, crap. And the city councils with our democracy voted five people to come up here and vote for that junk, period. Well, I've got news for you, different game, different time, and conservative councilmen who appreciate public employees. So guess what?
Well, I'm certainly not against the employee raise, I'm for that.
It's not a raise, it's a bonus.
Well, excuse me, the bonus. That, that was not what I said. I was talking about the cuts to the outreach for our tourism dollars. I just, I don't see it. I mean, how much, all right, first of all, Mr. Fleener, what is the 1% bonus going to cost the city?
About $110,000, Mr. Hubbard. And if we get more money, if, if we're fortunate enough to get more money, then they need to be up to 2%.
We can get that from other places. We don't want to cut back on our tourism outreach.
Well, why don't you let some of these big time, you know, we got a letter today...
Let Mr. Hubbard talk.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize, I apologize.
Let Mr. Hubbard talk. Go ahead.
That's, that's my position, is I'm for the bonus, I think we can do it, but I don't think we have to cut the chamber in order to do it.
We have to. We have to cut it, $30,000. And I'll tell you, so we are, so I'll, you know, you got the same letter I got, you got the same letter I got from all these big, high-dollar people and big wigs in the city of Bristol.
Let Mr. Hubbard finish, Mr. Fleener.
I didn't finish, you cut me off, and just like I cut you off.
Okay, fair enough.
So we're even.
We're even.
Now I said, the chamber's talking, cutting 50,000, not 30.
That's great. But it ultimately ends up being a 30% reduction in what they gave out last year.
Well...
And why don't we let some of these big wigs that were signed off on this letter that we were supposed to be impressed with? I hate name dropping.
I mean, you're...
Let them pony it up. I hate name dropping. It really bothers me when somebody says so-and-so supports this, so-and-so supports this, and they send it to you in a letter, "Well, pony up the money, y'all big wigs. Pay the 40 or 50,000 to help support tourism in Bristol, Virginia. Do it. They're big timers. Let the big timers roll."
Mr. Hartley, do you have anything to say?
Well, I mean, evidently, this is the first I've heard about all this, so, I mean, I'm kind of with Mr. Hubbard. I don't have a problem if we can find it to pay the employees a bonus, that, I think that's an investment. I think tourism is an investment, and, you know, again, to cut them, we've already cut them 75,000 from last year, to cut them down to 50,000 makes it very hard for them to do their job, to take that money and leverage it with state funds, and, you know, it's kind of odd, I'm sitting here, you know, we're talking about tourism, and we just had the Secretary of Commerce and Trade downtown to look, to look at some of these tourism attractions and talk to him about downtown in Bristol and stuff, and yet, you know, we're cutting back on this, and part of the reason, the, my understanding's always been, although it doesn't specify amount, is that you do have to return a certain amount because of the rate of the mills and lodging tax back to tourism promotion. So for 50,000, for what we're getting in tourism, I think you're, we will see that continue to go down, I said that last year when we cut it, and, and you want, you may not see it right away, because, you know, but I think ultimately, this is going to have a bad effect. As far as Believe in Bristol, I, I think what they do is, is great, but I think the CVB is really the, the organization that markets Bristol, and if nobody, if nobody's marketing Bristol, then, you know, we, we will see a reduction in those lodging taxes, I have no doubt. We may not see it in six months or a year, but over... We may not see it in six months or a year, but over time, we will see that. So I, I don't support that. I mean, you know, if, if it's $30,000 is the difference, at Saturday's meeting, I said we ought to include the, the real estate tax from Hobby Lobby. We've included the tax in that assessment for the hotels. We know they're gonna open up Hobby Lobby's movement, so there's ways we can find that money, I think, if, if, if that's the point, but to me, to, to cut it from the C V B is not the way to find that.
Mr. Wingard? Well, it falls back to what I've been saying for a year and a half now, it's gonna take everybody in this city to get us out of it, and that is gonna be all these outside agencies, everybody that pays taxes, nobody is gonna get everything they want. Nope, actually, nobody's gonna get anything they want. And we've gotta position ourselves, and we do have good employees in this city, and they need to be rewarded for their services, and they have been years without a raise or a bonus. And, you know, it's, it's not their fault that we're in this position, it's not the taxpayers' fault that we're in this position, and everything is gonna have to be shared across the board. We're gonna have to get a little bit more taxes, we're gonna have to cut out of all these departments, because this is the city budget, and the city consists of five or six, seven different departments. Well, you can't cut the, and trim the budget without affecting one of those apart, departments or two. But what we have got to focus on is the fact that when we did refinance, we refinanced with the least aggressive impact on this city, which gave us several years to prepare for this and to get ready. But every year going forward, we are gonna have to do maneuvers to prepare and position ourselves to be ready for it, and those are not gonna be easy tasks. People are not gonna be happy, but it is something that we have to do, and we have to do it with a lot of thought and a lot of prayer to make sure that we don't go to one extreme or the other in any direction. And if we think about all this and talk about it and give ourselves time to navigate through it, we'll get through it as smoothly as possible, but to shooting from the hip, we can't do To cut the C V B, B, from 100,000 to 50,000, I'm not all excited about that, because they do a good job promoting us. But I'm gonna go back to, this is going to have to be a shared, across the board, to get us through this and position us. So I'm all in favor of giving our employees or giving the city employees a 1% bonus, and we have a method to see a way to do that without it affecting the budget too much. And so I'm in favor of that, no, I don't wanna cut, nobody wants to cut, nobody wants to see nobody lose a job. I'd love to be sitting here with money just rolling in and this city thriving, but unfortunately, that's not the case that we have found ourselves in. So it is time for the hard decisions to be made, and they're gonna be tough, and they're not gonna be easy, and you're always gonna have somebody mad at you. So that's part of this job that we have, and it's unfortunate, but this is the position the city is in, and, and we've gotta move forward, and it's not gonna be easy, and it's not gonna be easy decisions. So I'm in favor of this 1% raise and pulling 50 out of, uh, C V B and diverting 20 to Believe in Bristol. That young lady, I don't personally know her, but I've seen her work, she does a fabulous job, and downtown is thriving now. And, uh, we cut her off completely last year, and if we can give her a little bit of money back, I'm all in favor of that, so, uh, that's my position on it.
Well, we talked Saturday, and we were lucky, Mr. Wingard, thank you for your comments, I think you were on spot on, just like, and I know that the ones that support C V B, I get it, I mean, I get where you're coming from, but, you know, there is shared pain, to ever have gain, you gotta have shared pain. And it can't just come, I agree, it just can't come from one group or this group or whatever. And in my personal opinion, C V B is more financially equipped to handle things than any other outside agency, quite frankly. But let me say, we talked about tax increase, we talked about it Saturday, there wasn't a whole lot of taste for that. There wasn't a lot at all, in fact, I don't think I heard, Mr. Hartley was, I, I had him going a little bit, but he wasn't gonna, he wasn't gonna get too excited, I don't think, but, but ultimately, if things fall apart, next year's gonna be really bad. So the people in this city better get equipped for that, and it ain't gonna be pretty. So we better start preparing now, and we need, again, I'll reiterate, I can't reiterate it enough, that we need to give our public employees, and I know every one of you all, and every one of y'all's seen 'em out here in the cold, doing work on the roads, you've seen 'em in the cold, rain, snow, going into houses that are burning. How can we basically do for an outside agency when it's supposed to be that our own hotels and so forth market themselves, if you really think about that? Those road signs on the side of the interstate say, there's a restaurant at this next exit. I mean, it's all up and down interstate on both sides of the state line, it probably ever come, ever stayed in the union. But how can we possibly, I'm asking any of you, not to say thanks? And we, and the only way we can say thanks is to come up with the money. And what Mr. Mumpower, our mayor, proposed, I'm all in, I'm sure we'll get cat calls and so forth and so on, ugly letters, Facebook things saying what beast we are to cut out tourism in the city of Bristol, Virginia, we'll call anytime, but at least be honest enough to talk to me face to face, and let's look at the numbers. Because if you're disingenuous and dishonest and you put stuff on social media and you don't identify yourself, you know, really, you're not, you're not too good. You're not too good. So I'm with, that's where I'm at, that's where I, I think the mayor is, and I think the vice mayor is, and I don't think that anything's gonna change in the interim, unless somebody's able to twist somebody's arm up here, and I don't think it's gonna happen. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your leadership again, sir.
The last thing I wanna say is, um, I, I don't think you can point to any one department or area that we haven't taken a look at and cut their expenses and taken, um, them down from where they were. Every single department in this city, from the school system to police department and fire, everybody has had their department budget affected, right? So that's called, um, sharing the pain, if you wanna call it that, but we're looking everywhere we can get the dollars, 'cause we've got, we've gotta have a position that we know we can move forward. So, yeah, you're not gonna make anybody happy. So we, we, we're now, we're now just saying, okay, if we've gotta be the bad guy, we'll just be the bad guy. But at least when we get through this, we can say, we tried our best to put this city in a financial position so we could look forward to the long term. That's what I'm worried about. I'm not worried about what people say today, I'm worried about positioning us for the next five to 10 years, right? That's the most important thing. And, yep, you can't cut yourself to prosperity, so we're almost at the end of the rope on what we can do on the cut side of this budget. We have got to start growing the top line revenues. We cannot grow the top line revenues by tax increases, that's counterproductive, right? But we have to start growing it from new businesses, so the city staff, guess who's gonna be the staff that needs to help us get there? Who, who's gonna be the entity that helps position the city from a public relations, talking to businesses that wanna come here? It's the city staff, so the city staff needs to be given something, right? A little bit to say, look, you've done a good job in the last few months, keep doing it, because you're getting us there. You gotta do a little bit more, 'cause we started to move in the right direction. So, yeah, we recognize that everybody in this council's got different opinions on the outside agencies and the fire department, the police department, and the sheriff's department and all that, but everybody has a budget issue this year, and nobody's immune to money that we've not budgeted, because we've had to look at every single area. So with that said, um, I think this, I can get up in the morning and look in the mirror and say, this is, this is reasonable, because at the end of the day, you can still do a lot with even the $50,000 we're giving the C V B. But, you know, the message is this, try to, try to do the very best you can with that 50,000, and then let's see if we've, we've got input out of it that's really positive, and then we'll go find another 50, that's my message. Everybody thinks at the end of the budget cycle, there's no money there to be had, that's not true, that's not ever true. The sheriff's department came back, they needed money, we had to amend the budget, but it's gotta be, it's gotta make sense, all right? So let's be transparent, we've seen, we've seen events out there that's occurred in the community that was paid out of dollars that a lot of us don't agree with, and that's the kinda stuff we're talking about. You cannot spend money on stuff that's really not a must-have, it's, it's gotta be something that we really need right now, that's gonna really help us go forward. So the times of just having money just to, to spend it on the way we've spent it in the past, we've gotta change our behavior a little bit, that's all we're saying. So I think everybody's finally, hopefully, understanding that's just where we are as a city. It'll get better, but it never gets better until you kinda go through some rough discussions and some rough times and kinda work your way through the, through the tou, through the tough wrestling match. So I think we're, we're kinda getting there, I think we've wrestled about it, um, everything we've done, I think, is fairly reasonable, um, we could've been a lot more aggressive than what we were this year, we could, we could've been, it could've been a lot more painful, uh, but we didn't do that. We didn't do that to try to just ease ourself into it over, over the next couple budget cycles, so we can kinda see where we are. So I'll make a comment on things like Hobby Lobby, we've purposely said we can't count on stuff like that. Bristol, Tennessee, as an example, does not count on that tax revenue unless it actually happens. Businesses don't count on that revenue till it actually is on the balance sheet, right? And, and you can count on it, you can't ever count on it, right? Hobby Lobby next week could say, we're gonna file for, you know, Chapter 11, happens, right? There's all kinds of things in the private market that can happen. So you can only say we can have that revenue when you actually see it, so I think that's the approach we're trying to take. City manager's trying to be really conservative with the revenues coming into the city. We can't overestimate what we think we're gonna get and then find out we don't have near what we thought we had coming in here, 'cause it makes the situation even worse. And that's not what we need to do. So, yeah, it's painful right now, but it's gonna get better, folks, I'm promising, it's getting better, it's gonna get better. This is not something I wanna go through next year and the year after, I know nobody up here does, but you gotta stay the course, right? We're still having to stay the course, and that's where we're going, and that's the way we need to do business until we get there. All right, with that said, is there any other items that we wanna talk about in the budget that we wanna debate up here before we close the workshop, so the city manager has some more direction?
Uh, yeah, I have an item or two. Uh, code compliance, we have got to get that position filled. I don't think I've ever seen as much grass as high as it is, it's a shame, you gotta tell people to mow their yard, but you're right around town, and I mean, there is, there is a lot of properties that's waist-high, they ain't mowed the first time this year. So we've gotta get, uh, that position somehow filled and going again, and I don't know if it, if it can be done on part-time, I mean, how much code compliance is out there in the winter, I don't know, maybe this is, uh, could be a part-time job, but, uh, we're, we're gonna have to address that.
Well, that's, uh, possibly can be addressed with the jail situation that we're working on.
There's, that's a good point.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, that's...
But you've still gotta have somebody to send those letters and notify the landowner, because there is gonna, there has to be a charge for it.
Well, I wasn't thinking the actual inmate release program would be the person that does the code compliance, but I thought the, you know, his plan is to take and put those folks to work, which I think the trickle effect could be, you're freeing up some other staff resources that the city manager could use to maybe do the code compliance potentially.
Well, I think, um, in regards to code compliance, I can tell you, Lieutenant Sexton with the police department, he's been on light duty, and he has done a tremendous job with this, I know Amy has been working with him, sending letters, um, as well, to get, to put people on notice that there is a, that there are issues. So the inmate, the work release program will play a piece of this, but I, I do think it's imperative that we have someone in that position, if at least on a 20-hour basis, to, um, go out, knock on doors, touch base with landowners, and at least alert them to what the problem is, because sometimes landowners will take care of it once they realize there's a problem, sometimes they don't, but just being able to put a face to the enforcement action, I think, is imperative.
Okay, so you'll, uh, so how do you wanna handle this, um, comment?
Well, uh, I do, back during the budget discussion, it was, uh, requested by the department to add $20,000 in the budget for that position, for a part-time position, and I can probably juggle 20,000 from some other line item in order to make that happen if, if council sees that that's a, um, necessary item that we need to add back into the budget.
I mean, it's a shame you gotta tell people to mow their yard, but obviously, that's the case.
Well, I'm okay with you coming back with, uh, you know, that, you know, look at that, come back with that review and figure out how to fill that, um, not without increasing the budget.
Well, honestly, I think...
Not without increasing the budget.
I think honestly where that will come from will probably be from the savings on the inmate housing program, uh, and I might, you know, I think that was probably where we need to just take 20,000 from and put it into, into that, um, line item.
Okay, so you wanna comment a little bit on the schedule upcoming, just real quick?
Uh, yeah, I can, um, we'll have the first reading of the budget, it appears that we have a consensus on the budget at this point, um, we'll have a first reading of the budget a week from tonight on May 22nd, and then we'll have the second reading of the budget on June the 12th. At each one of those opportunities, the public will have an opportunity to make public comments in regards to the budget as it's presented, and council will then have an opportunity to vote on that, and I would dare say that if, um, we, uh, get this budget passed the way it has been, uh, I commend you all for working together, I know we've all worked together a lot on this, and, uh, we've had a very smooth budget process this year, so you all should be commended for that, and we can move on to bigger and better things after we get the budget over with.
Thank you for your efforts, CFO's efforts, I'm telling you what, I mean, it's, it's impressive, and, uh, you all are to be commended, okay? Even though you can take the big bucks to do it.
Well, I will say that, you know, the, the staff's done a pretty good job looking at the budget really hard, CFO in particular. Um, I think next year, we need to start earlier, we need to have a good look at where we are, probably August, so we need to see June and July actuals in August, so we need to see what our run rate looks like, and then look at it again in late October, November, so we can take at least two looks, how we're progressing the first half of the year next year, and see if we're on track or we need to do something different. I mean, we're kind of in that mode now, so we can't wait till after the holidays and start talking about budgets, we kinda need to be, be developing what we're doing along the way, so I just ask you to think about a process that allows us to do that, right? All right, with that said, meeting, workshop adjourned.